Thank you Deputy Mayor Henderson. Memo one from the Chief Administrative Officer regarding an amended development charges bylaw for the town of Coburg. The action recommended that council adopt the development charges background study dated November 3rd, 2016 and dated December 20th, 2016, prepared by Watson and Associates Economists Limited. As attached to the staff report, an authorized preparation of a development charges bylaw for presentation to council on January 3rd, 2017, to be effective as of that date. And further, that council direct staff to meet with representatives of the development community to review comments provided at council at the December 12th, 2016 Public Development Charges Review Meeting of Council. And further, that council direct staff to provide council with an update to the development charges bylaw, along with any recommended adjustments to the November 3rd, 2016 background development charges study, based on the above noted discussions, no later than July 1st, 2017.
Okay, thank you. Are there any points of clarification or discussion at this point? Hearing none, back to you, councillor Darling.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Second one is a letter from Trish Baird, Community Care Northumberland requesting--
Oh, sorry.
No, pardon me.
Need a vote, member?
Okay.
Your chair.
Sorry, my mistake. On the first one, development charges, all in favor of the motion? All in favor, unopposed, carried.
And councillor Darling, I'm going to interrupt because I know we have a very important announcement. I got excited to start the agenda, and if you allow me the indulgence, I would ask Mr. Barry Thrasher, our Director of Public Works, to make a very special announcement for wonderful purpose.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce our new Deputy Director of Public Works, Laurie Wills. Laurie comes to us from the private consulting engineering sector and gained 12 years doing project management and design work in just the kind of projects we carry out each year here in Coburg. Street reconstruction, water and sewer, stormwater management, and along the way she worked in wastewater treatment facility as well, so she knows that aspect of our department. Laurie has a degree in environmental engineering from the University of Guelph and is a member of Professional Engineers Ontario. Welcome Laurie.
And Laurie, congratulations, and I know our council's delighted to have you here as part of the team. I know my brother-in-law would be delighted because he's a professor at Guelph University, and he's always proud when there's a former grad. If you'd like to say a few words, by all means. Well, thank you and have a most pleasant night, and I know we'll see you in many functions throughout the year. Thank you. And councillor Darling, back to you on number two.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, and I do agree that was worth interrupting the motion for. The second is a letter from Trish Baird, Community Care Northumberland, requesting support from the council for the West Northumberland Hospice Initiative. And the action recommended that council support the submission of expression of interest for development of a residential hospice in West Northumberland as proposed by the Central East Local Health Integration Network, and offer active participation along with other local stakeholders in support of the expression of interest as requested by Community Care of Northumberland. Any discussion on this matter? Councillor McCarthy?
Thank you, and through the deputy mayor to Mr. Darling, or whoever can answer it, when I hear language like "in the ways we will participate," that usually means money, and I'm just wondering if there's a sense that this, that we will be actually committing or be approached to commit funds towards this initiative, if anybody knows?
I had the same question myself. At this time, I'm not aware of any request for financially, but I wondered if the deputy mayor or the CAO could offer more on that.
Perhaps, I'd address it to the CEO. I can comment it, but I'll first address it to the CAO.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we are not aware of any request for any funds at this point. It doesn't say there won't be, but we're not aware at this point.
Anything else councillor McCarthy?
Well, just that the language in the letter, then, it asks us to demon-- oh yes, in working with to develop-- oh, sorry. Anyways, basically that how we will commit beyond a letter of support, so I just, we're doing budget right now, and I get concerned when there's a letter like this. It's not that it's a worthy project, but when the-- oh, there we go, thank you.
It's my understanding that they approached the mayor for a letter of support from council as they are applying for funding. So, it has not been brought to our attention at this point that they're looking for any funding from the town, but simply it is a attachment to their application for funding.
And through the chair to you councillor McCarthy, I also understand the reason it's here tonight, because their timelines, because of that grant application are rather tight, and by doing this, it enables them to meet their deadline.
Councillor Rowden?
Councillor Darling, I understand, yes, this is going to be another added service to the town of Coburg, which is a very good sign, because I had a meeting today at the hospital, and this is part of the service that's going to be expanded by the province, and through Lynx Corporation, that they'll give home care for palliative care for people that are in dire need of it, in a lot of pain, or cancer patients or whatever, so, yes, I'm quite familiar with what's going on, and I'm glad to see that they're setting up here close to home.
Yes, that is correct. I am under the standing that this will be in West Northumberland somewhere, does not necessarily guarantee that this facility will be built in Coburg, is that correct?
My understanding from the gentleman this afternoon was that he was reaching out to other municipalities for similar letters of support.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If I may, to the CAO, so, our approval of this letter at this time-- pardon me, this motion, we are not committing to any funding, is that correct?
Through the chair, you are absolutely correct.
Very good, thank you. All in favor of the motion? Opposed, if any? Carried.
Councillor Darling, you continue.
Yes, just moving up the ladder here. Third motion is from the Coburg Downtown Business Area Board, requesting secretarial support for the Coburg DBIA board meetings as part of the 2017 budget deliberations. And the action recommended that council refer the matter to staff for a report as part of the 2017 budget deliberations. Any questions regarding this motion? Councillor McCarthy?
Thank you, and through the deputy mayor to council in general, as I am on the DBIA board, one of the, and I want to give some background to this request, our advisory committees and local boards have staff that do the minutes, the corporate minutes, and what we find with the Coburg DBIA, because these are volunteer business people, and there can be turnover, that the continuity of corporate memory and the timeliness of getting minutes done has been a part of how we've struggled to see the programs and know what the members want to have from their board, and we felt that this was of sufficient importance with the downtown revitalization initiative and the focus on economic development in the downtown area, that it seems simple to just do minutes, but for anybody who's ever done them, it's not simple. It's important to get them done, and we need someone dedicated to this task, so we felt this was something that council should consider, but also that the DBIA is a local board of council, and that puts them under the purview of council. They're not a third-party organization like the art gallery or other organizations, so it's important to consider. Thank you.
Any other questions in regard to this motion? Okay, all in favor? Opposed, if any? None, carried. Memo four is from the manager of planning regarding execution of an agreement with the federal government for the temporary loan of the House of Commons Chair used by the Honorable James Coburn, Coburg's father of Confederation. The action recommended is that council authorize preparation of a bylaw authorizing the mayor and municipal clerk to execute an agreement with the federal government for the temporary loan of the House of Commons Chair used by the Honorable James Coburn, Coburg's father of Confederation. Any questions or concerns over this motion? Councillor McCarthy? Oh, sorry, Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Perhaps through you, Mr. Chair, if I could ask, before discussion, if I could ask Mr. Franklin, who's been working with myself and Mr. Washburn for the past year to make some comments, I think it would be most helpful, perhaps before the discussion.
Mr. Washburn, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In this case, my staff report kind of goes into some of the description in terms of what's happened, in terms of the discussions on why the House of Commons is seriously considering this loan to the town of Coburg. If there's construction going on at the house right now, where the chair would normally sit in the speaker's offices underneath repairs and renovations in Ottawa, and given that this is the 150th anniversary of the Confederation of our great country, what an ideal opportunity now for the office of the speaker that we have in Victoria Hall to temporarily house such a fantastic historical piece. This is the actual chair that Coburn sat in in the 1860s and 1870s. It was returned from the family of Coburn in the early 19-- late 1960s, early 1970s, back to Ottawa, where it had been lost by the family. It has now sat in Ottawa for some time, and the House of Commons is, with a signing of a piece of paper and some insurance and some transportation costs, willing to have that here in Coburg for this grand celebration year. Obviously, given my second hat as playing the father of Confederation, James Coburn, I'm extremely excited about the opportunity of bringing that chair to Coburg and sit in his office downstairs. I'd be happy to answer any of the more technical type questions along with that.
I don't know, I think that pretty well says it. Deputy Mayor?
And through you, Mr. Chair, just the additional information, we're excited about the goal, if can be, is to try and get it here for February the 13th, which is James Coburn's actual birthday, and the House of Commons has indicated they're able to loan it to us from near that timeframe till the end of perhaps August, September. So, it really is a tribute to the work done by staff and Mr. Washburn in this regard, so I just wanted to add that little piece before your discussion.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Henderson. Any questions or discussion in regard to this? All in favor of the motion? Opposed, if any? Carried.
Now, we're moving to the Parks and Recreation Services, and again, the actual chair for this is councillor Darling. Again, so councillor Darling, the floor is yours.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I have a memo from the manager of parks in the town of Rist regarding the awarding of a request for proposal for the urban forestry master plan for the town of Coburg. And the action recommended that council award the request for proposal CO-16-16 for the urban forestry master plan to Kilgore and Associates Limited in the amount of $34,980 HST excluded, to be refunded-- pardon me, to be funded from the approved 2016 Parks and Recreation capital budget with the additional $4,980 to be used for approved forestry inventory program of the Forestry Services Parks operating budget. Any discussion in regard to this motion? Just at this time, if Director Huswick, have you had anything to add in regard to this?
Mr. Chair, just a couple of brief comments. This is a very exciting proactive initiative that we're taking within the town in order to ensure the health and sustainability of our urban forests throughout the community. It's going to deliver a number of important outcomes. It's going to allow us to assess the current state of the urban forest. It will also allow us to develop some strategies to improve that state in the future, and as well, some improvements in terms of the way we currently operate with respect to the forestry, and that will deliver a number of specific things, including looking at the current tree planting and maintenance activities that we undertake, looking at operating and capital budgets, and helping to determine priorities for the future, as well as the types of staffing requirements related to those priorities and strategies in the future as well. So, it's going to produce a five-year action plan that will really help the Parks Department move forward and develop a really healthy urban forest in this community.
Thank you very much Director Huswick. Councillor Rowden?
Yes councillor, is, when you do, when you're doing this, is this just including the large amounts of trees, as I see it as a forest, or do we, is this all of the trees in the town of Coburg, including every park and on the side streets and as well?
Director Huswick?
Mr. Chair to councillor Rowden, this is looking at the community as a whole. It's dealing with public properties, because that's what we have responsibility, but certainly we'll be looking at all of our parks and the community as a whole.
Thank you Director Huswick. Any other questions? Okay, a call for a vote in this motion, all in favor? Opposed, if any? Carried.
Next on the agenda is Public Works Service, so councillor Rehm?
Thank you Deputy Mayor, and one item on the agenda tonight is memo from the risk management official, source water protection, regarding the source water protection municipal implementation fund. Now, the action recommended that whereas council appoint Jennifer Leno as the risk management official for the town of Coburg pursuant to the bylaw number 093-2014, in order to uphold the requirements of the Clean Water Act 2006. Now, therefore, it be resolved that council receive the reports regarding source water protection and the use of funding provided to the town accord by the province of Ontario, Minister Environment and Climate Change for information purposes. And again, Jennifer is well aware, and she's very educated in this field of management for sewage plant, plus the risk management of the water source protection plan, so I'm sure she will be a-- and Director Thrasher, did you want to add anything to that? I know it's something we have to do.
Deputy Mayor, through you. Jennifer Leno is of course our environmental technician. She has an office at wastewater treatment plant one, and she's a representative on this board, and this program actually has some opportunities for funding from time to time, and she goes on to list that in this report as well. Some of the signs that have been installed on Darcy Street, for example, in the vicinity of the water treatment plant, were paid for through this funding, so Jennifer Leno as coordinator has indicated is an ideal person, an ideal staff person for this position, and is providing this report for information.
Thank you Director Thrasher. Is there any other questions from council? Councillor Darling?
Yes, through you councillor Rowden, maybe to Director Thrasher. The funds from this, was it, did they also provide for the drinking water signs that are put along some of the streets at the bottom of the north-south streets towards the lake for water protection?
That's correct. Those are more or less public education signs to draw awareness to the fact that the water treatment plant is close by, and urging the public to take extra care and precautions with, relating, with regard to any spills or environmental issues like that. So, yes, those signs were paid from this.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions? Just to let you know that this was done, the water source protection planning was done through the Conservation Authority, Ganaraska, and Lower Trent, and three other co-author autonomy, I believe, and Crowe, and of course, the funding did come from the province after we really got off them to lobby them for more funding for the municipalities, for just what you were talking about, signage and someone to capture. Any other questions? All in favor? Carried.
Thank you councillor Rehm. Proceeding the agenda, we're now moving to planning and development. Councillor Burkett?
We have a memo from the secretary of the Coburg Heritage Advisory Committee regarding heritage permit application for construction of a new porch and porch roof for property located at 99 to 101 Albert Street, Coburg, Campbell. Action recommended that council endorse the recommendation of the Coburg Heritage Advisory Committee and grant a heritage permit number HP-2016-059 for construction of a new porch and porch roof at 99 to 101 Albert Street, Coburg, subject to the following conditions: that the porch be painted in a color consistent with the town of Coburg's heritage color palette, and that the design relates generally to the plans submitted, subject to the finalization of details with the planning staff with regard to the roof design and heritage features. And I would refer this, if there's any questions, Rob Franklin can answer them. Councillor Darling?
Yes, thank you councillor Burkett. Mr. Franklin was down by the property and did a little inspection in regard to this porch. I noticed that there is an existing lower porch built now, right out to the sidewalk. I'm just curious, does the town property line end right at the south side of the sidewalk, or is this porch impeding on town property?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to councillor Darling, in this case, the property line is basically right at that front corner. It's very tight to sidewalk, as is that porch. The previous porch that was there was very tight to that same sidewalk on the south side of Albert Street. We're working with Mr. Campbell in terms of trying to permit what's already been built, and did not match exactly what was originally intended, which was to include a roof similar in design and style to what had been there. Certainly, if you've been there, you can see the remnants on the brick face of the upper roof, and we're trying to get some input back that fits more in character with the heritage district there.
Yes, thank you. I recall the porch that was there previously, and yes, I could see the outline of the former porch. Thank you.
Any other questions in regards to this? I'd just like to make a comment in regards to this. So, this was the second time that the applicant came forth to the committee. The first time, we did deny an endorsement, and it seems like he's willing to work with the staff now to get it to a new form and add these attributes. So, these recommendations were directly from the committee and our discussion, so, and he seemed quite eager to do that, so he can get the project finished. So, I'll call a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. I have a memo from the manager of planning regarding accessory residential dwelling units. Action recommended that council receive the staff initiative application for information purpose, purposes, and refer the application to the planning department for a report, and further that the notice requirements for the Planning Act RSO 1990, as amended, be implemented, including the scheduling of a public meeting. You could ask Mr. Franklin to give a little report on this.
Through you, Mr. Chair. In this case, what's happened is the ministry had passed on requirements that every municipality have in their official plan and zoning bylaw, the allowance for secondary residential units to be allowed in single, semi-detached, en-roe, or townhouse dwelling units, subject to local conditions such as parking or those kinds of things. In this case, there had been such an allowance in the 2010 adopted official plan from the town of Coburg. However, that official plan is still before the Ontario Municipal Board in 2016, and the draft zoning bylaw changes that had gone to a public meeting in 2013 still have not been approved yet. Obviously, we can't do that until the new official plan has been approved by the board. We've now received from the ministry a request that by March 31st, that this topic be dealt with at all municipalities in Ontario. Therefore, we've pulled this one from the back burner to the front burner, and are looking at amending the original 2003 zoning bylaw to put in language that would permit this. This obviously needs discussion with the fire department, the billing department, as well as the public at large through a formal public meeting process. So, it's a staff-initiated zoning bylaw amendment that will modify definitions and permissions within the existing zoning bylaw for homes to have this kind of activity. Certainly, every weekend that we see the real estate tab in our local paper, you'll see in-law suite potential or duplex. Now, we're going to try to help work with the folks that have got these to make them legal and make them safe, and that's the important thing, is the safety, and that the zoning bylaw should not be the thing that holds back people making their property safe.
Thank you. Any questions in regard to this issue? Councillor McCarthy?
Thank you councillor Burkett. Through you, Mr. Franklin. There must be a lot of municipalities in this situation, and I'm asking that in the spirit of, because this has to be in the official plan and the zoning bylaws contingent on the official plan being approved, are there other ways of side-ending? You know what I mean? It's a funny, it's a funny idea to me, that I understand why we need to do this, but in a sense, the holdup for our official plan procedurally is meant to, would have stopped everything, but we're going around it. Any thoughts on that?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the councillor. In this case, actually, the 2001 official plan had some very general language that permitted secondary suites, but the 2003 comprehensive zoning bylaw did not get into the level of detail, and only allowed it in certain sections of town within fairly stringent criteria, larger lots, those kinds of things. That is not in the spirit of the new provincial direction, towards affordable and safe housing. And so, now, we're looking at modifying that definitions back of the 03 zoning bylaw, which we can do, and actually has been drafted. So, now, it's a matter of going through, having that draft released to the public, getting those comments, and that's what this direction that we're hoping to get from council to formally start to do that, instead of the informal discussions we've been having.
Councillor McCarthy?
Thank you, and further to that, because it sounds as though the provincial government recognizes that this is a solution by making it more, let's say, accessible, literally, in different types of properties to create affordable housing, is this something we'll promote in the community to make people aware, or will it just sort of sit there and out in the community, people will say, well, you know, gosh, it would really work for us if we could do the following and come to you? So, how does the community become aware that this is an option?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the councillor. In this case, of course, as part of that, and in the significant discussions we've had informally with billing and fire department, because we want, we want folks to come to the town to talk about how to make these properties safe, I think using our new public engagement process, beyond just the Planning Act minimum requirements of dealing with this particular topic, that we'll be putting together some information packages, putting notices on the webpage, those kinds of things, so that folks are aware that these rules are out there to help make their houses, existing houses affordable, as well as the potential of putting in extra income from rental suites in their existing housing stock, which also meets some of the housing targets towards intensification for the urban areas.
Deputy Mayor Henderson? Deputy Mayor Henderson?
And through you, Mr. Chair. And just to further support Mr. Franklin's comments, well, we worked way back in, as you know, we've worked on a brand-new zoning bylaw. I believe Mr. Franklin can correct me, but I think we're on draft four or five that will follow once the official plan is adopted. And many of the comments that Mr. Franklin made are in that zoning bylaw right now. So, we've actually been very progressive. And the good news for Coburg, when this comes and is amended, I believe it will line beautifully with what we've already recommended coming forward for the town of Coburg. So, it is a great fit, and I'd like to think, hopefully, 2017 will be a dynamic year, hopefully, to move forward on these outstanding planning issues.
Councilor Darling?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Franklin, correct me if I'm mistaken here, but in these bylaws several years ago, the province wanted us to go ahead and promote these basement units or whatever, so that we could supply more housing. Now, I have been in contact with, or had people contacting me from the Northumberland Landlords Association, basically pestering, wondering when this is going to go through. So, I explained to them that it was being held up by the province, by the appeals in the official plan. So, it's my understanding that the, this is to circumvent those appeals, so that these appeals do not hold up this bylaw, and I can finally say to them that we are going to have this if it's passed. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It doesn't specifically circumvent our official plan process. Because there was already language in our 2001 official plan that the 2003 zoning bylaw did not meet this new intent from the, from the province. Obviously, the 2010 official plan did. What we want to be able to do is to have, we have official plan policy now as to having the zoning bylaw, the regulations, the details, the specifics, put in place, so that the folks who have got basement renovations that I've been dealing with now for multiple years that don't have the second kitchen in them, that they can be rentable units. And I've had folks that are basically calling every two to three months going, can I actually rent this as a unit now instead of just a room? Billing department, fire department staff going, when are you guys going to get your language up to date with our codes? So, that's what we're, we're excited about moving forward from the planning department, to have the policy in place, so that the detailed regulations can, can be there for affordable, safe housing.
Excellent. That was my understanding. Thank you.
Any other questions? See you none? Call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
And Madam Clerk, if you wish, make any comment about unfinished business?
Chair, just that the fact that the list is in the agenda package for us?
Thank you. Any questions regarding unfinished business from any members of council? Hearing none, I'll proceed back to you, Councilor Darling, about closed session.
Well, the closed session, are we going to move into it now?
No, just reading the verbatim.
Okay, a motion that council meet in closed session in accordance with section 239 of the Municipal Act SO 2001 regarding personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, accessibility advisory committee applications, and the planning and sustainability advisory committee applications.
And for members of the press, these names will be released next week as part of our council agendas. We don't hold you up. At this point, I'm going to call for an adjournment. And just to comment, after that adjournment, I'm going to request a five-minute recess, so that allows a bit of time if there's questions from the press regarding this session of council, the committee as a whole. And it also will give our staff member behind us time to set up for our next special council meeting, which takes place tonight as well. Adjournment? Councilor Burkett, thank you. All those in favor? Carried. So adjourned.